Now, am I supposed to be up on the screen right there? Or?
You don't have to.
Oh, you're because you're here.
Yeah, we are.
And did Mary jump maybe?
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming on tonight. We are the Human Rights Commission, and tonight is June the sixth of twenty twenty four. I want to give congratulations to the Charlottesville graduates that are down in the pavilion graduating on tonight. Good luck to them and their future endeavors and and everything. And I hope that what we are working on tonight will give them an opportunity when they get done with getting their trade or getting their degree that they will have an opportunity to come back here and have somewhere to live.
As the mother of a Charlottesville high school graduate who is now living in Myattick because she can't find a place she can afford.
I understand.
Let's get this done.
I understand.
It's personal.
Yeah, it's very personal.
Very personal.
I have one in the house myself, so. So let's go ahead and get rolling. It is six thirty six on tonight. So time to recall roll.
Happy so earnest.
I'm.
Okay.
Here.
Mary is not with us. Charlie not with us. Angela not with us. Hattie not with us. Catherine. Suzanne.
Here.
Heather is also not with us.
Let us recite our mission. Everybody ready? Just a note. For those that are attending the meeting and those that may be online, please be respectful for the order of me. If you need to speak, please raise your hand and we'll get to you. Use our statements if possible. Be respectful for one another, give a pause, active listening, and try to give everyone an opportunity to speak. And I appreciate you for giving me grace and patience as we move through the process. All right. If you are someone that's listening virtually, if you experience technical difficulties, you may call four three four nine seven zero three one five one, and a staff member will assist you. So if you are attending virtually and you are experiencing technical difficulties, you may call four three four nine seven zero three one five one. All right. Yes.
Just to make sure, three one one five.
Three one one five.
It's easy to do. I don't think we have any virtual participants, but.
Nine seven nine four three four nine seven zero three one one five.
There you go.
Do we have any attendees virtually? And I think everyone that's attended here are palace. You're right. Okay. So we don't have any matters about public since we haven't been unless one of the attendees would like to stand up with anything. All right, thank you. All right, so tonight is a work session for us. Talk about housing homelessness and rapid ramp services. Right, basically, a legislative council. And basically, that's for us is we want to get information from all of you in the matters of housing homelessness and other services that are in the community. And so that when we bring in or talk to any of the legislators that are in our area as well as city council. And we hear what they're supporting that we're either doing the same thing or saying, maybe you should talk to someone else or talk to one of these groups. Because what you're supporting is not just saying where the they're going. You know, we, I think we all know that housing is a huge issue. And not just housing homelessness and what happens when you are, if you have been incarcerated and you need to get out and you have to find housing. Or if you're moving into town and you have need to find housing. Or you're finally getting out of homelessness. You have a job or you have a job paying you enough to find housing and trying to find out. All of those things are are play a big role in a lot of what's going on here in Charlottesville. It's very interesting to hear and the numbers of what it takes to find a house in Charlottesville or find housing, not just a house, but even to rent a home in Charlottesville. It is very, very difficult. And, you know, people have to get lucky. And again, I admit what I said at the beginning and that I hope that what we are learning, information that we're gathering, that, you know, when the kids that are graduating tonight, you know, it doesn't make a difference if it's Charlottesville or Almory or Almory or Western or Monticello that, you know, because this is not just a city thing. Kind of having the same issues for us housing, but, you know, we're worried about what's happening here that we can't find a way that a kid can go get a degree, come back home, find a job, and find a place that they can live. So if you would. Does anybody want to go first? You can. Well, when you come up, please give us your name, what organization you are providing information from and before you talk about your organization, I would love to know about you. And what brought you to being a part of that, the organization that you're representing.
So my name is Shayla Washington. I'm the executive director of the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless. We are the HUD designated lead agency for our continuing care. I have lived in Charlottesville since two thousand and six, experienced homelessness here briefly in two thousand and twelve, and that kind of drove my passion to homelessness here, or at least trying to figure out how to navigate the resources available. That's where my interest derives. Selfishly, but, you know, I'm trying to give to the greater good as well. But I've prepared a little statement for you all. Good evening, human rights commissioners and fellow community members. My name is Shayla Washington, and I have the honor of serving as the executive director of the Blue Ridge Area Coalition for the Homeless, also known as BRAC. While I've only served in this role since November twenty twenty three, I have eight years of experience working and volunteering in the homeless services sector here. As someone who has personally experienced homelessness in Charlottesville many years ago, I find that the priorities and concerns are still the same for the two hundred and seven people that we know should be experiencing homelessness in our continuum of care today. We need more truly affordable housing for people who are at thirty percent of the area median income or less. And for here, for a household of one, that would be about a annual income of about twenty five thousand, just over twenty five thousand. Many folks that our agency serve in the homeless system of care struggle to afford even seven hundred dollars a month for a rooming house. I would also like to encourage Charlottesville City Council to consider funding for a homeless outreach position, which would greatly benefit our unhoused population of connection and access to housing resources. There were funds in the FY twenty four budget, but after researching FY twenty five budget, which is structured a little bit differently on the website, I can't tell if there's no funding available for that position, but I would advocate for that as well. It was a homeless services outreach coordinator for sixty seven thousand. RAC is also in the process of applying for private grant funding for homeless outreach coordinator as well. But it would be ideal to have a team of two to kind of work on that, to provide more coverage for the city. On the housing end of the spectrum, I can tell you that many folks are struggling with ever increasing rents and being at risk of eviction. Putting more funding towards agencies that provide targeted eviction prevention would be a welcome relief for nonprofits that are doing that work, like Piedmont Housing Alliance, which has already tapped out of its funds, but has several eligible households in queue for assistance. So I'm grateful for all the work that you all do and that HRC does and we have a work community, and I appreciate it.
Well, don't, don't leave. Does anybody have any questions?
Can we hear from everyone?
You want to hear from everyone?
That I, but I don't want to get.
Is everybody able to stay?
Yeah. Do you have a time constraint? I believe I thought you may have.
I did.
Okay.
Still questions for everyone?
Okay, good deal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And so just a clarification is we asked everybody here to come tonight with legislative thoughts, which I've already got some written down. But I will say that I probably have questions that might go outside of those spaces as well.
I think that's fine. For me, yes, legislative policies or something like that, but I think also clarification on thoughts and things like that, because, I mean, I think this is, you know, again, for me, this is not a lane that I'm in all the time.
Right. Yeah, there's a brain rest in this room.
Yeah, the more information I can get, you know, the better, so. All right. I know you just, you coming in hot. And you said you had to leave early.
I do. Yes, I do.
Okay, so while I have you here, I would love you to come on up if you could. So, you know, I don't want you worried about if you have to walk out on, do you, we have had a chance to hear from you. So what I've asked people to do is come up, give your name, what organization you were speaking from, and a little bit about you, who you are, and what brought you to the position that you're in right now.
Let me see if I can remember. So it's a organization I'm with. All right, so I am with the city of Charlottesville Downtown Job Center. I manage the Downtown Job Center, so that's employment services. And then I also manage the Home to Hope program. That's our reentry program.
Okay, so you're in the office. You're, you're, okay. Who, you know, who, how long you been in Charlottesville? You know, what, who, who's Roy when he's not in there?
I, so I've been in Charlottesville pretty much all my life, probably since about three or four. So I'm a Charlotte's Dilly and, for sure. I have been with the city of Charlottesville for five and a half years approximately. I came from, so to the city of Charlottesville. Prior to working here, I actually worked at the Sexual Assault Resource Agency as an outreach advisor. Well, yes, outreach. That was for two years. Yeah, but I'm from here. Laboring this community. I attend church here. I enjoy sports. Really love the community. I did get a chance to complete the Leadership Charlottesville program in twenty fourteen, so that was very eye opening. And it showed me things about this community that I didn't know before, even though I had lived here for so long.
Ernest put you on the spot.
Yeah. What was it? It was this, was a third part to the question?
You, 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 you got me. I, I, I mean, just wanted, I mean, yes, I, I know you guys have information. But I want also know who the people are, because I haven't really met some of you guys before. So I, and I don't think some of us have either. So I would love to learn more about you other than just information that you have. So when I do see you out, say hey.
What brought you to this role?
This role actually, so I enjoyed the work that I did at the Sexual Assault Resource Agency, but it was grant funded. So because of that, I would just keep my eyes open to what opportunities were out there. And I just had a, honestly, I had like a chance encounter with the manager at the time of the Downtown Job Center. She had an opening, and then from there, we just continued to stay in touch, make connections. And then I landed into the role of Job Center Coordinator. And then that role evolved into my current role, which is Employment and Financial Opportunity Manager for the Downtown Job Center. So our department is located in the Office of Social Equity, which is a part of the city manager's office.
You talked about Home to Hope.
So Home to Hope. Yeah, forgive me too. I did walk when the. So. Yeah, it is kind of humid out there. This actually is a cozy setting, so I feel just fine. But Home to Hope is a reentry program. It started in twenty nineteen. It was an initiative of the current, of at the time, that mayor and also the council at that time. And it was basically just the city's attempt at trying to play a role in the the field of reentry and to provide some type of resources that our residents could directly access. And so that was a training program of eight individuals. Four of them were hired by the city and four were partnered with other organizations, other local organizations, nonprofits. And so we had the four individuals that stayed with the Downtown Job Center. Who, well, I'll take that back. We had the four individuals that began with the Department of Human Services. That was a bit rocky, so they moved over to the Job Center because the Job Center did orchestrate and facilitate the training kinda. And I guess we orchestrated the training, but the experts, of course, carried out the training. But it was just a good landing spot for the four navigators since they have familiarity with our department. We were there providing the support the whole time they were going through their training process. And it was easy for them to land with us. At that time, we were in the Office of Economic Development. And now, of course, move on to Office of Social Equity, but yeah, they've been with us ever since. So that's four navigators. Two of the original peer navigators are still with us and two have moved on or moved back to the Department of Human Services. So they, they had success as peer navigators, but opportunities became available. And they wanted to try, you know, explore, try some.
So what do navigators do?
The peer navigators, they basically walk hand in hand with the clients that they serve. So all of our client, well, our clients are city residents. We do branch out and are able to assist some with the county and surrounding counties. And plus, if they cannot directly help someone, they'll refer them to a partner, an agency, or whatever resources that they need. But they pretty much walk hand in hand. They do have, they do have lived experience. They do have the skill sets that they learned through the trainings. They're all from this area or familiar with this area. And they just assist our program participants with whatever needs they have in the community. So basically getting reacclimated with the, with the community after leaving incarceration. So that's the Home to Hope program.
Are, are they able to, in doing that, are they able to make enough money to live, to continue living?
They have the capability to. It's a matter of buying into the opportunities that our program presented. But they definitely have the ability to. For me, one of the things that I see that is a challenge, I think the biggest challenge that I see with our program participants is, of course, housing. Employment is not really any longer that big of a barrier. There are lots of employers that will give opportunities to persons if they're willing to work. That's not really the issue. It's more so housing. And specifically for our program participants is is the, I guess, the baggage that we carry. So.
The initial.
Yeah.
So walk in the door and.
Yeah, and a lot of times what they run into is they can't, you know, drop the fact that they have particular credit histories, they have particular rental histories. So and then the third one is they have particular criminal backgrounds. So those three things, I mean, a rental property can, you know, deny you or make it hard for you to rent from that property and a private landlord typically can just deny you or choose to go with someone else who has applied for the apartment. So that's the things that I see is that even when they get to a certain place and they're making some strides, they still may not be able to access the housing because of those three things.
What are some of the reasons that are given for being denied housing? I'm curious, what are, what are, were those individuals hearing from landlords as they're trying to rent?
I try to, I try to capture some of the, whenever they'll share, I'll try to capture some of those reasons for denial. Most of the time for our program participants is the backgrounds, is their backgrounds. And certain ones, they may prefer not to rent to persons because of those backgrounds. Especially if they're violent in nature or if there's multiple charges or offenses. So, yeah, of course, I get the, your rental history is very poor. Especially if you have an eviction or multiple evictions. Credit, your rental history. More, more, more times I work with the credit history somehow, some way. So if an agency is willing to, what we run into is if you are able to provide, now what I'm starting to see is if you're able to provide basically a double security deposit and a first month's rent, they'll rent to you.
You will, will.
Will.
Yeah, but that's. Two times over and then that's, that's.
I've heard that a lot since I've been with the program. I've heard a, a lot of times they are secure place, but it'll require a deposit, last month's rent, and then also first month's rent. So that happens. So working around credit history sometimes, but not as much the rental history and the criminal background.
So what happens in terms of, so to your point about that employment's not necessarily the biggest barrier, housing's the biggest barrier and everything that you just shared. Employment's not necessarily the biggest barrier, housing's the biggest barrier and everything that you just shared. What, for your program participants, I realize this is not one size fits all, but. What are they doing in terms of, of able to find housing? What's that look like?
So it looks like sometimes they don't, which we, which turns into homelessness. Uh, it looks like sometimes living in your car until you can, it's a problem. And then uh settling for uh like. Situations that might not be their preference, like Roman, Roman situations around here. We're starting to see a lot of. Uh landlords that will uh buy the homes and then split out the rooms, shared uh bathroom and kitchen. Uh, so they'll go into those uh situations and sometimes that's not best. Or, you know, that's not the best fit, I guess, for some of our program participants. Uh especially if they have children or if they uh. Have other strengths like due to probation or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I hear, really talk about the, the, the children side.
Right.
That's, I mean, that's just another, you know, itself.
How many of your program participants through Home to Hope are experiencing homelessness?
Uh, we presented to the City Council, I think um. It was like uh. And uh the data was fifty percent. So fifty percent of our intakes that we get come to us. Identifying that they are homeless or that they are uh in a shelter or, or displaced, so. That's up here about for peer navigators off the bat. Because they are trying to convince individuals to make some strides, but the. Individual probably dealing with God knows what in the background, so it's very difficult for them to. Find, you know, this program.
What recommendations do you have in terms of, like, as we think about? Recommendations that we may make to legislators or to the City Council? What recommendations do you have for us?
It's really tough. I don't know uh, I don't know what's up there. I don't know what options are even out there.
Yeah.
Well, put like this though, don't worry about what options are. What would you suggest or what would you love to see?
I think it's, I think it's necessary to have some type of uh. We, we just need more shelters, even if they're temporary. I, I can understand if you begin somewhere. There's a lot, you know, spaces for persons and you have to make some type of progress by. Year one or two or whatever, and, and then that space opens up for someone else, but. There's just not enough options to at least give people a chance to uh rehouse like in short term, so. That's when, that's the first thing that comes to mind. It's a hot, just something, a option.
Let me ask you, yeah, cause you said about someone having, needing time. What do you, what would you think, or how much time do you, would you think someone would need? In a secure place like that, for them to be in a position to move on to something else?
I think it would, I think it would uh. The resources that are uh in this area, I would suspect that it would take about. A year for sure for a person to, the time to actually work, work, work the. I don't wanna say system, but work the resources that are available to me. I would say a year, I, I could do one of them. I would, I would say it would be tough to do it and last than a year, but at least a year. Maybe a little long.
Same, similar question, but in a different way. Are there any barriers or unnecessary requirements you think are being imposed on you? Um, either the local or the state level and the direct services that you provide?
Could you repeat that question?
Sure. Um, what are some of the barriers that you experience in the direct ser- in direct service provision? That's, is imposed on you at the local or state level that you wanna like knock that down?
Biggest one is um. So I said about fifty percent of our participants come to us unhoused, probably about. Probably about sixty to seventy percent of them come to us with some type of restrictions on their DMV licenses and uh records. So that's another barrier that they face uh that restrict them very significantly. That's why I see a lot is like license reinstatements and then um. Uh license reinstatements, um also uh restrictions. Due to uh car insurance. I don't, I haven't, I haven't gotten enough data as to whether our um participants come to us with. Certain levels of education, so I can't speak to that one, but I do know that that's often an issue and also know, of course, that the um. That's difficult. If you didn't get your G D, at some point it gets hard to part, you feel bad.
Hard to get a job?
Uh, yeah, G D.
I say, hard, hard to get a job as well, cause you don't have.
Yeah, definitely.
Your G D, you know, you just, yeah, that's. Anybody else have any more questions for? I don't think I have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
I mentioned Sarah, you were already sitting there.
Yeah, yeah. Remember you. Our small world.
Right, may I just close out there? Did you have any thoughts on state level legislative recommendations that you wanted to raise to council? Cause that's one of their roles is to bring those to City Council. A recommendation to the General Assembly ultimately, but. Any, any thoughts on state law that you would like to be amended, changed, proposed? That's, that's kind of the key thing that we're. Interested in to you right now. Um, so we gotta do that in August, so.
And if you don't have anything. You can all, y'all in the same office. Yeah, you, send some, send some to Lily. Yeah, if you, if something comes up, you know, let us know. Get, yeah, get back to us.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Where are there meals that you could learn?
Worth getting, great.
It's a.
Pearl Island.
All right, um. Um, Mr. Dillard. You want to come upstairs?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I am George Dillard. Um, I am uh the chair that, that, so the NAACP the Housing uh Chair. Uh, I've been there for three years. Makes like deal with points that uh people have that they can't get into. Rooms or they, they discriminate, you discriminate there or something. They come with me with something to tell me that they did, they wasn't happy. So I have to investigate it. That's, that's what I did. I, I let them know that. I'm not a lawyer. All I can do is provide, if you're a lawyer, you didn't have to go get a lawyer, but I do everything I can to fight, to help with uh. People getting into, well, they need to get into, well, they have problems with. People working on their houses. I'm working on the, the stuff doing, uh, stuff. I've been doing a couple cases in the past that. People haven't had any heat over the winter, maybe like two or three months, and you know, why you, you people don't have heat, so yeah. I, I finally get it straightened out, they get heat. Also listening to what you were saying, that a lot of stuff with the homeless, that, that is beginning to hit my desk, uh, yeah. So uh, yeah, basically, and uh I'm a retired police officer thirty-one years. Uh, this, Charlottesville is my home. I was born and raised here. Never worked in the city, but uh I was, I was born and raised here and uh. So I kinda give a damn anything. I, I also her, uh, hold the cheer as a, the legal regress cheer for the NAACP also. So I hold two cheers there. So we, I guess the president figured. But yeah, I uh, I work real hard with uh these folks in, in housing. Uh, my state chairperson is very good. She's uh. Been to the legislature, she's, she give me stuff to help me here, because actually the housing thing is new to me he- here. But I'm learning it and I have a good person that, out of Richmond, that really works with me real well. And I just pick the phone up anytime and she tell me, well, this is not what you need to do across your teeth, dot your eyes. You'll be okay. So, so far with that, things been happening, it's been happening, just been uh. Slow, slow, uh. I mean, I really feel bad, some of these homeless people around here. I mean, we really need to. Do something for these people, you know. I mean, we got a lot of stuff sitting, a lot of properties sitting around at the city owners. That they can really make something for these people to, to sit there and like and sleep in parks on the side of the. Streets and stuff. And, and it's real sad. It's, it's sad for me to come back home. To my hometown and see this. I used to see it in the city a lot, but. It really hit home when I come back here and start seeing this, like. I thought I'll see this here in Charlottesville, but it's here, you know, and. Hope we can do what we can do with these folks to get them somewhere where it's nice and warm and dry. Get them, some of these people that's out here that it's uh. They had a life like we had at one spot at time. It's just things went south and they just, they just need help to put me, get back on their feet. Hopefully, we can get something along with that.
So you've been a lifetime person here and uh you've seen changes.
Yes, a lot of changes.
That, you know, happened in. What um, you said you were surprised when you came back.
Yes.
You saw homeless.
Homeless, a lot of, a lot of changes been made. I mean, a lot of stuff uh. In the neighborhoods that have changed that. Outside contractors came in and built stuff and they were supposed to be stuff that have. Low income families or whatever, it don't work that way. It haven't worked that way. And, and I hear this a lot for a lot of people. That, you know, affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing, it's not affordable housing. You know, person, affordable housing to me is somebody who works an everyday job, you know, basically say. Person working at McDonald's or somewhere and they making what, two, three hundred dollars a week? It's the time they try to pay their rent, eat whatever, they ain't got no one. So, you know, that's why they got people housing, uh, everything for these people to, for help. And it's, when they go for help, it's hard for them. I'm uh, working on a client now that been waiting three months. They put it, they work hard, put their money up, they put the application in and everything. They was waiting for to get there. Okay, to move into that place, when they did, they went back to ask people, you know, like, what's going on with taking so long? But we lost your application. You know, so uh. They come to me with the complaint. I took care of it, you know. Thank God they're in their apartment now. You know, they're in their apartment. Yeah, I had to kinda step hard on some things, but yeah, they're, they're in their apartment now. And they have a little child, you know, that they need to be, they was living with somebody and people was ready for them to go and they. It's supposed to be like a short term thing. Anyhow, yeah, that's uh stuff here in Charlottesville, it's just, it's not. They need to stop saying affordable housing, I, I think. You're not going, if, if. These contractors, these folks come up to say, okay, we go, we build this and we gonna have X amount of affordable housing in there. What did you call affordable housing? If it's gonna be affordable for these people, what, what type of people are you looking for affordable? You know, can't everybody pay eight, nine thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars a month rent? Then pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars to park in a parking garage? So then that's gonna take the people who in the, in the neighborhoods, that's gonna take their. Uh, parking, so then that, then you got a problem. So, you know, I feel the city developers and all, they, when they. Talk to these folks and they sign off on these uh plans and things. They need to really re- research everything and make sure they don't do what this, they wanna do. Somebody's getting paid up and paid with some, like, say this, this we gonna get. It's not there.
I agree with you though. I mean, that, that it, I wish that it were, there were more. Individuals that if they set it on do long-term housing.
Yes.
Is, and they, they do that and not change. They were, they pay the fine to the city.
That's right.
Yeah, well, you know, when I come along, I remember, don't forget, I'll say this briefly, uh, my parents, uh, we lived. Apartment housing, you know, I, I was so on a blessing when we ever got this. But anyhow, the city, it came up with the city and uh. Uh, it was, let me think back a minute, um. It was the city and low in, low income housing. They went in the neighborhood and they built houses. And they put, if you qualify for a certain amount as a husband and wife. You know, you build a house, you can buy a house, you know. That's the affordable housing. I'm, I'm, I'm knowing about, you know, my parents, they. We'll go back to nineteen seventy-one. They had a new home built. They've been in all these years. They still in it right today. In a nice neighborhood, you know. I mean, some of the houses, some people that lived in it, they're not there anymore, but. When they did the subdivision, it was for low income housing. And that's what I, what I see here, low income housing. You have people out there who can afford to make a, a decent mortgage. And get their foot in the door, stood and saying, well, no, you can't afford this. You uh, you gotta have extra amount of money, you know. Even, even if you work. Hard every day, you work, got a good job, you making a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's hard to come up with ten percent down to put, to a mortgage company, mortgage lender to move in. If you work it, if you got kids and, and everything. So, you know, a lot of this, you. They gonna have to start working with people to make things better for, for as far as living and not only in Charlottesville, it's everywhere, but Charlottesville, Albemarle, which, which I cover. You know, it's a lot of stuff that need to be taken care of when these people sign off on this, uh, when they say affordable housing. It's not affordable housing, you know, so.
George, what are the biggest, you said you, what are the biggest complaints you're hearing about housing?
The biggest complaint I hear about housing is that people put in an application and they getting turned down. That's the biggest complaint and they feel that they, well, you know, I, I got good credit, I got this, now my credit's not this bad, you know. Even though I, 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 I have this, I researched this on some stuff that um people had um. Went to uh apply for, you know, apartment, whatever, and the first thing they do is they look at, at credit. So then I asked the person, you know, in the, on, on the confidential, you know, where does your credit score? Why you think that your credit was that? People, some people that I've dealt with, yeah, the credit might have been a little low. Some of, I, I've dealt with a person in the past, their credit was rated uh six twenty, six thirty. So how bad is it? You know, how bad is it? I mean, if you got a six twenty, six thirties credit score, then you ought to be able to work with that person. You know, like he was saying earlier, they would maybe looking for a double the security deposit.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I have heard. Uh, I, I have heard that they have asked, uh, the first month rent and the last month rent, plus a double security deposit. Who can afford that? You know, who can afford that, so, it's, it's tough, I mean, and you got these landlords out here and uh. I call, I don't call them landlords, I call them some lords, because they, they wanna rent this stuff, but they don't wanna fix that money. That's another complaint that I get from a lot of people, I get a lot of stuff about, uh, you know, I pay my money, they won't do this, and they won't do the other, you know. So, I mean, I have a remedy for that, you know, that's what you need to do, and they do it, and uh, so. It ain't that you have to have a law, you, this is what the laws will ask you for, cause you, you got a book that you can go get, it's called Landlord Tenant Rights, and you got rights. And a tenant got more rights than a landlord does, if they, if they know what they're looking at or reading, and I show it to them. And I'll, I'll take in co- copy and give it to them, that this is what you need to do, and they've been doing it, and it's been working out. You don't have to give, don't give them the money, give it, put it in the ashtray, you know, they fix what they supposed to fix, then you give them the money. They take you to court, then you gotta, you got something to stand on, legally, you have something to stand on. So, yeah, it's, it's a lot of stuff that need to be changed, and that's where I feel about when they, when they say low income housing. Cause it's not low income housing.
Well, I appreciate your advocacy for people, but is that, that's so needed.
Most definitely, and, and if we all stick together. We can make it, we can make it happen, I mean, I, I have people on my team that works with me. And this is what we do, is a volunteer thing, it's not, we get, we don't get paid or nothing, it's voluntary, and uh. We end up spending money because we have to register every year to stay in the position or whatever that we're in and do. We get appointed as chairs on, on, on the board, and uh. It's my thing is, and I say it to my, my other members and my. My president, my, my president of, of my chapters, and she laughs, because she know I'm telling the truth, you know. You, you stop and you say, uh, why did I join this? And I ask them this, why did you join this? A lot of times they can't say that, you know, not only just joining this, because you got a card in your box, say, I own, I, I'm, I'm into this. Join this and make a, make a difference, make everybody happy, so, alright, anybody else?
I'm curious, then, then the amount of um, housing advocacy that you're doing, how many people are you advocating for, just maybe on a yearly basis?
Well, it all depends, I mean, this year, I've been with a couple of them, and they, and that pretty much came to me, and I just like. Okay, this is what you need to do, became the same, you know, um, I think when people see that someone's there. You just need some, somebody there to sort of have that little oof behind, behind them, that if some folks cannot. Speak up for themselves on different things, and if you, you've, you're not a lawyer, but you just pretty much, I mean, you're here, that's what you need to say. And that, that helps them, you know, so, yeah, but it may, the answer to your question on that, it's all adverse, you know, it's adverse.
Does, does, didn't know the CP, um, advertise the fact that they have their housing chair or someone?
Yeah, we, uh, we, uh. We let people know that all the different tiers that we have, we have education, medical, uh, like I said, uh. Legal regress, that's our biggest one, like, uh, basically that, human rights stuff, people working or whatever, uh. Uh, the education one, it's, it's another big, big one, um. It's, we, we put it out there to let people know. They, a lot of people get upset with the N double A C P, because they say the N double A C P don't do nothing. We have grounds and rules that we gotta go by, and that's, that's what we have to do, and. I can't guarantee that I can help you all the time, but I can put you in a situation that, hey, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do, you know. And uh. You don't please everybody, people get upset, or you don't do this, you don't do that, but I'm sorry, that's what, that's it, you know, it's rules and regulations and everything.
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Your time, um, you mentioned you're connected to the N double A C P state chair, I'm curious, what are some of the state legislation that she's advocating for? Um, this year, maybe connected to housing?
Uh, housing, a lot of stuff with uh, with HUD, um, and, and. I wanna tell you this right, because basically this is all, in a sense, new to me, but she's teaching me. But the, the, the stuff, she goes to the legislature and they file different stuff, she let me know, and I got a. Stack stuff that, that's big, that she just sent me for this last, uh, agenda they had, so, uh. I don't have a rate in front of me, just to tell you, but this is, this is that and that the other, so, uh, I don't wanna tell you something wrong there.
You find something that, that connects in with Charlesville.
Oh, yeah, I can find plenty of that.
And then that you can, you know, uh, uh, copy, paste and click to us.
Right, okay, well, yeah, I, actually, uh, before I come here, uh, when I talk to, uh, Todd, that, uh. I called her, I told her what was happening, she was just all excited, so, if I have to ever bring her here, I can bring her out.
That anytime support like that.
Yeah, yeah, she's very supportive, and uh, and she, and she works very hard, and she actually live in the city of Richmond, she does this in the city of Richmond. So you know how big the city of Richmond is, but yeah, anybody else?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody, you take a break? Alright, uh, Ms. Elizabeth.
Alright, I've been adding to my list the whole time, everyone else has been talking, so, y'all are in for a little bit. Some ideas, um. So, hello everyone, thank you for having me here, uh, my name is Elizabeth Stark, um. I'm the Housing Justice Chair of Charlottesville DSA, uh, but I do wear a couple hats in the community. I'm also the Eviction Prevention Case Manager at, uh, Piedmont Housing Alliance, where I administer the, um. Funding for the Virginia Eviction Reduction Program, um, I just wanna be clear though, tonight, I'm speaking in my capacity as an individual. And on behalf of DSA, and so my opinions shared today don't reflect those of my employer, though. They might be informed by some of the things, um, I experienced in my day to day work as well. Um, so, I came to Charlottesville in, um, about nineteen ninety four to go to college here. I went to UVA and I graduated, um, and I've actually moved away from Charlottesville and moved back three separate times. So, most recently, I've been here since twenty thirteen, um, my husband and I have two daughters here, who have gone through the city schools and. Um, and I'm a tenant, I'm a renter, so I think that says something too, you know, about the state of things here, um. I have yet, I hope to be able to buy a house, I guess, before at least one of my kids comes off to college. Um, and so through DSA, um, you know, we started doing our work. About four years ago, um, at the height of the pandemic and the eviction crisis. That was surrounding COVID before the moratorium was put into place, um, and so just about exactly four years ago, um. You know, we reached out to L H A C and said, hey, can, can you tell us what, what to do, uh, eviction court? And they trained us very generously and showed us the whole process, and so. Um, we would basically, for about two years, pretty, pretty regularly, um, go out. And go to the court, you know, the, the eviction information is on the site, but you have to get the physical addresses from the console in the court. And the only way to do that really is, we would request those documents and, you know, it required a lot of admin. Now you can just kind of go take pictures of the console, but then we have to enter all that information into a spreadsheet. To know where to go, who's on the docket, and go talk to those tenants. So we would go out and canvas, I think, for two years, I think we probably hit. Maybe ninety percent of the people that were facing eviction in the whole community, that's Charlottesville and Albemarle. Um, and then we also had a presence, um, and we would talk to them about their rights. We would connect them with aid, which we had a lot of at the time, um, and then we also would go to eviction court. Which is on Tuesdays at one P M here in Charlottesville, and Thursdays at two P M at Albemarle. And we'd stand outside there and kind of bother everyone going in, hey, are you a tenant, like, do you want, do you know your rights in court? And give them that information there, um, and again, connect them with resources. And make sure they knew their rights, which they had quite a bit of at the time, um, as we know. In the interim, you know, COVID, um, moratoria and, um, funding have expired, so. Um, and especially, that's true, um, I'm happy that the city con- continues to have robust. Um, rental relief funding and other kinds of funding for crises, um, the same is not true for Albemarle County. Um, they funded, they, they reduced their funding from two point one million to two hundred and sixty thousand. Um, you know, be saying basically that was COVID era money and we're, we're reducing it, um, so with that reduction in funding. Um, it stressed the entire other systems, the churches and the private charities and, and other organizations that provide that rental relief. Um, we're all particularly stressed, especially right now, because, um, as it's June, fiscal year's ending and. The funds are really drying up and the amount that's available is, is really, really reduced, um. So that's kind of the funding situation, and, and in talking to tenants, that's a crucial part of what keeps them housed. Is you had something bad happened, you got sick, and you didn't work for two weeks a month. And you lost that income, that could be, you know, one or two thousand dollars of income, which they don't have a way to get back. And it can start this cycle of crises and financial disaster, and it really can be something that small, um. You know, and we know that, right, we know that so many people in the country don't have that savings. Um, so, you know, without, the funding really matters, and it really makes a difference. Um, here in Charlottesville, one of the big things I would mention is that. While we do have that robust community resource line funding, um, people can call and get one thousand dollars a month. For up to, um, up to three thousand per year, and up to a ten thousand dollar lifetime limit, which is very generous. But, um, is that, does anyone have rent that's under a thousand dollars? Because if you didn't pay your rent one month, that's not gonna be enough to cover it. And so then we start the other cycle of late fees, of, um, attorney charges. Even though they know you're probably not gonna get evicted, they're gonna put you through the thing, put you through the wringer. Extract those extra fees for attorneys and legal fees, so, one of the big recommendations I'd make is. Can we tie the community resource line, um, funding that's available? Could we tie that to market rate rent, right? We're not just asking, you know, we're not saying like, hey, can you give us? You know, we, we're asking for something really specific, which is like, let's have this be enough to cover one month's rent. Um, so, that's something that, you know, we could do locally, um, and I think would be really important. Another really big thing, um, that's on the local, local, um, place. Is representation for, um, people facing eviction. Um, Legal Aid Justice Center represents people that have a housing choice voucher. Or people that lived in, um, subsidized or Lytec communities, um, those are the people, you need to meet those criteria. I mean, they have, obviously, you know, there's like, there are exceptions, but, um, for the most part, that's who they're representing in court. Um, uh, Central Virginia Legal Aid Society represents people who make less than the federal poverty limit. Um, so, if you're someone making less than the poverty limit. You're struggling to afford your rent just out of the gate, whereas, you know, but if you're someone who's maybe at thirty percent AMI. Someone who's thirty to fifty percent, you could still have major issues with your landlord, with conditions. Um, you know, some, stuff that many of the folks here have talked about tonight, and, you know, there's, there's no representation option for you. That's affordable, right? So that's something that I really see, I see folks falling through that crack, um. Of not, you know, and then there's capacity issues as well, but, um, we need something. So we need a resource for those, you know, low income, but not extremely low income tenants. So they can assert their rights as well, and they can use, you know, we all know that, uh, representation really matters, especially at eviction court. Um, so, let's see, um, locally, a couple other things for me are. Um, I speak to a lot of families experiencing homelessness, and, um. There's, there's no shelter for them, we don't have a shelter for families right now. Um, you know, I think we've all told the same hundred clients to apply for the Hope House, which has two. Open, you know, two apartments coming up, right? So, um, I understand that it's a temporary gap, but it's still a very significant one. Um, and then also wraparound services for folks, um, I have clients from Friday, like. Around two o'clock, I sort of stop my work because my phone starts ringing, that's when the real emergencies start coming in, and, you know. Um, I talked to someone last week who said, well, I want, you know, I'm sleeping in my car, I've been sleeping in my car for three weeks. And I said, well, let me, you know, we've got a few minutes, let me call over to the Salvation Army, but it's like, she was at work. And she wouldn't get off work till eight, and so then she had to wait till Monday to be connected with shelter. Um, so that's another issue, is, uh, there's just a hole, because people don't work all the time. Um, so it'd be nice if we did have some way to address folks that have emergencies, not during business hours. And then, um. You know, another issue that, you know, we've talked about, what, you know, it's come up a lot, what affordable housing is, and what, what makes. You know, who, who affordable housing is for, we know there's a huge need in the thirty percent and under AMI, but there are also that thirty to fifty percent. Um, those are folks that are really, you know, um, you know, really stretched thin. Um, especially with the kinds of rents that we're talking about. Um, you know, you could still be fifty percent rent burden, which isn't sustainable, that's how you get on track to. Uh-oh, your car broke down, now you're entering into crisis, so, um, you know, really thinking about. Uh, you know, again, it kind of goes back to the thing I said, the community resource line, let's be realistic, let's look at what market rate rent really is here. And try to see if we can address those services to that market rate rent, and stop pretending like. Like they're, like, if your income is lower, so is your rent, because it, it, it's not the case, people are paying it through the nose. Um, and then, let's see. Um, those, and then another one is, and this is something I know you know about Todd, and we've talked about in various things, but plain English. Finding ways to share tenant resources in plain English, I, I talk to tenants regularly. Who get the payer quit notice, because it says, you know, you owe this money, you have five days to pay or get out. You know, it says vacate the premises, right? So people, and especially, um. You know, lots of people, but for me, especially like non-English speakers, they think they've been evicted, they think that's the eviction. And they don't, you know, they may not realize that they have due process rights, and that, you know, I have to really talk them down, and. I have this nice little map from Virginia Poverty Law Center that kind of shows you just how, how long the eviction process can stretch out. Which is actually about like four to six weeks and maybe longer, um, but people, you know, we need something, we could, we could be having those go out. With language that we're, we are wanting to put in about representation, about resources, about tenant rights. Um, so I think that would be really helpful. Um, and I feel good, cause I was really worried that I was just gonna say all things that have to do with the legislature specifically. And those are some things that I really think that, um, we can address here locally, uh, but of course, I have a pretty big wishlist for the legislation as well. You could, um, just pull up the list of, um, housing bills that were vetoed, that's a good starting place, um. But truly, you know, we had had the fourteen day payer quit, um, and that got rolled back, so, you know, a fourteen day payer quit, giving tenants that time. Um, there was legislation that, you know, said you have to try, if it's lower than one month's rent. said you have to try, if it's lower than one month's rent, you have to try to set up a payment plan. Um, so many of the tenants I talked to would benefit from that, because again, they've just, they might get COVID and then they have to miss work for two weeks or, you know, same with car, a child's sick. A child is sick twice. That happens all the time. So, you know, kind of having those, um, having some way for them to get back on track without catastrophe going through, um. Let's see. Um, my big one, and this, and I think inside, I've gotten a lot of feedback from various advocates that this is too big for right now. Um, so, some people call it just cause eviction. I don't believe there is a just cause for eviction, so I prefer to say right to renewal. Um, I see so many tenants who didn't know that their lease wasn't renewing, didn't really wanna know that their lease wasn't renewing and maybe weren't as proactive as they should be and are essentially facing a different kind of eviction, where it's the same thing, you know, with the security deposits, they they now have to find a way to pay basically the equivalent of three months' rent to find a new place. And that's really impossible and, you know, there aren't, um, services that really help with security deposits. That's not something people help with, so, you know, it kind of, i- if those, those, those tenants can really go back into homeless, you know, not back into homeless, they can start experiencing homelessness because they're just not able to find a place. Um, so, you know, I, I really see that and especially, you know, in Charlottesville, we have left small landlords, they're protected. You know, they, they don't have the same, um, they don't have to meet the same, uh, quality, you know, they can discriminate basically is what I'm trying to say, right? They're, they're able to say, I don't like that you always get money from the community resource line, so I don't wanna renew you. Um, you know, I do, um, try to make fair housing complaints, it's like when I can, but that's not a solution to something that is a systemic problem. Um, so we really need, you know, a right, and, and it's worth saying, and, and I always forget to mention this, but um, if you're in Lytec or voucher properties, you do have more rights um, to renew, and especially if you're a housing voucher holder, you do have a right to renew and you have many more protections. But also with, you know, not being able to renew, it opens you up, because the landlord, um, if they say, I'm not renewing your lease because you've been organizing other tenants, well, then, then the tenant might have a case, right? Because they can do it for any reason, but they can't retaliate. So it's like if they say the reason, then sometimes they can get into sticky, um, get into sticky territory. But in general, if they just say, I'm not renewing, then we can all know that it was because that tenant was organizing other tenants and making complaints about conditions. Uh, but there's nothing to be done. So, until we have that right to renewal, um, what few protections tenants have can't be asserted. Um, and, and then the other thing was conditions issues, you know, like a lot of people facing eviction, um, you know, they're, they're very irate because they're like, my sink hasn't worked, my kitchen sink hasn't worked for four months. Or I have clients who, right before the summons appears, or, you know, I speak to tenants right before the summons appears, oh, the air conditioner that was broken all summer is now fixed. So, you know, conditions issues go hand in hand with eviction and there was a law to try to say that tenants, you know, there was proposed legislation to say that tenants should be able to assert conditions issues even in the midst of an eviction. Um, you know, and it's because they're like, well, now that I have you here, can we talk about these other problems too? Um, so I think that's really important. Um, and that's my list, can you all, can you take care of that for me? I really appreciate it, thank you.
Would you promise?
I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is there about to have any questions?
Has there been any legislation or is there any proposed legislation around the issue of the exorbitant fees?
Yes, there was one, there was one this, um, this season that said, um, you kind of need to list out all the fees, you can't have hidden fees.
Feel like the front page of the lease.
Because the fees are a huge one. I mean, you know, there's the sewer fee, but then there's a sewer connection fee. There's the trash fee, but then there's the trash connection. There's the rent, and then there you pay nine dollars to be able to pay the rent. Uh, so these fees really add up, and especially if you add late fees on top of it. I mean, some tenants are probably paying upwards of, you know, a hundred to two hundred dollars extra a month just in these small fees for convenience fees and, you know, those kind of things.
Are you seeing any restrictions in the community's funding that's available to be able to pay for, for late fees or those kinds of fees?
Um,
Is it only for the rent screen?
I think most of the funding available kind of rolls all of that into the rental arrears. Um, so, so most with, to the extent that the funding levels are there, tenants are able to connect with the, all of the folks.
Any other questions?
What would you prioritize?
Oh, boy. Yeah, I'll be back. Um, well, you know, I think some of the local ones that I brought up, because those are things that, you know, I mean, obviously, I don't think anyone's gonna build a shelter for families, but, but can we really work toward putting some kind of emergency shelter in place? Um, and, but, oh, gosh, I mean, it's really tough. I mean, for me, that right to renewal is essential because until that's in place, none of the other supposed rights that tenants have can, can be utilized, like because they will always face retaliation and in this market, you know, um, I mean, I speak to tenants at their door who have mold on their walls, whose children are sick because of the conditions in that home, but they don't wanna move because where will they go? They, you know, th- they can afford that place. And so, you know, it's like people are really stuck because of affordability issues. Um, so that right to renewal, I think, would really open up the ability to really put pressure on landlords to address conditions issues and and all the other, like, fees and things like that.
The other question. You know, we are, um, Todd, is, I live, uh, the office is organized on plain language. Still to get out to, it was so, um, when I heard that, I said, wow. Um, but that is so true. That, um, I guess, I guess people, or landlords get away with that.
And landlords, I mean, they use it as a, they weaponize it all the time, like, they say, um, especially over tenants, usually not over eviction, but over other kinds of things like you know, non-renewal for other reasons or, um, yeah, a ta- termination of the lease, you know, they'll say, uh, if you don't get out by the thirtieth, I'm gonna have the sheriff come. And it's like, you're gonna have the sheriff come in, like, August fifteenth. You know what I mean? Like, uh, they really threaten tenants and, and especially, um, that can, that can be really scary if.
Well, yeah, especially if someone comes up, says it in front of their kids or something.
And I have a lot of tenants who are, you know, I speak to a lot of tenants who are in fragile states anyway, they might have children with disabilities and that's part of why they're struggling with their housing. And then the children hear that and it causes a mental health crisis for their children. Um, so, you know, there's a real cycle there. So, but, so, yeah, having the plain language and making people, I guess you can't be like, you're in, you're getting evicted, but feel empowered, right? But having the knowledge they need to understand the process and know their rights and be confident in that could be real.
Just to slow, to slow it down. You know, and say, okay, well, you know, what are, I have some rights, I have some things I can do. This is, is, this is not tomorrow. You know, I do understand I have to get stuff together. But I have, sometimes there are some steps that, that can be done. Um, you know, that assurance, but that, but again, once someone hears that, it's not a in the insurance, it's, you know, I go into survival.
And, and it's very scary for tenants because they kind of almost go into that mode too early. Because they, they get that payer quit and then that triggers all kinds of anxiety and stuff, but it's like, really, that's the time that they should be saying, can I get an extra job really quick to kind of try to, can I take active steps? Try to get some money together to cover this, but it almost makes them feel like all hope is lost and it's really, even when they still have, you know, ostensibly if they had a trial, you know, that process from payer quit, you know, you have five days, then the landlord files for the first hearing, that usually takes two or three weeks. Then if they go to that hearing, they request a trial, that takes another two or three weeks. So they really, you know, it's a five day payer quit, but they've got time.
Yeah, but I think, but also think too, thinking about it a little bit, is once you get into some hu- into housing, trying to stay
Yes.
In that housing.
Yes.
You know, and they're doing everything they can with working, one, two, three, four jobs. And then they're still not having enough. You know, you know, there is a lot of despair, and, uh, because I can't do anything else.
Yep, or people that have lost their car, they've given up, you know, they have a phone, but like barely, you know, like that's about to go and it's like, they can't have these basic things even though they're working hard. So, yes, it is. And, and I see a lot of folks who almost like could be kept housed, there's just due to the restrictions or things and it's, it's almost like this, they almost are on this inevitable path where, okay, maybe they'll get the judgment, but then there's a ding on their record for so long. But then, then maybe, maybe the Haven will have resources for them because they have funds that can kick in once you have that judgment and not sooner. But in some ways, you know, it's a perverse incentive because they can get the funds to stay housed, but only because they will never, you know, they will struggle to find housing again for the rest of their lives, like. So, there's things like that, that too, I think, um. I wish there was a way to address them, like each, each agency has its little segment and people kind of bump, bump around to the, you know, the different criteria and I wish there was a way to just intervene and, you know, do the diversion and keep them housed, because that's the, that's the most, I mean, obviously, it's the best outcome for many reasons, but it's also frankly the cheapest for the community, um. So, uh, yeah. But thank you so much for having me. I'm sorry, I know I have a little bit of a laundry list, but I appreciate your advocacy. And I hope, you know, if there's anything I can do, um, I'm gonna try to be more involved in the legislative session in the coming year, so I'm happy to, to partner or share ideas and, um, yeah, always happy to chat. Thanks, everybody.
We never ask questions for Washington, and we ask questions for everyone else, so.
We still also have Deidra. I wanna make sure we hear from everybody.
I'll only come up if you can say my full name correctly.
Well, I was looking at your name.
How are you all tonight? I'm doing well. Um, so I'm Deidra Tracy Karen Dongo. I am the Senior Director of Adult Rehabilitation Services at Region Ten. Um, and what were the three questions? It was Roy, so I can't.
Yeah, so, well, asked, um, a little bit about yourself. And what brought you to the job that you're in? And, um, about what, the job that you do?
Okay, so I, um, currently live in Flavanna County, born and raised in Flavanna, but of course, you know, we call this town, so we come to town. To work and play. Um, I do have a lot of family members, loved ones that live here, um, in the city of Charlottesville. I am a, the Director to the Board for Wartime Fitness Warriors in Charlottesville, so, um, I work here in that capacity as well, not work, but volunteer here in that capacity. And Flavanna County, I'm the Vice President of a group called Flavanna Leaders for Race and Diversity. Um, formerly the President of the NAACP, now just a member. Um, because of the Flavanna Leaders Race and Diversity, our initiatives take up a lot of my time, so I'm unable to participate with the NAACP the way that I'm used to in Flavanna. But in terms of my job, so I supervise the directors that supervise medical substance use services, mental health case management, and, um, also the new Blue Ridge Center that is, um, on Burnett Street. So, I, I used to have housing in my shop as well. We just recently transitioned housing. Um, and we're doing a little bit of a restructure, um, so, but, but along those same lines, PATH is with Substance Use Services, and that is a program um, where you guys may know Harold Patterson and Cindy Richardson. Um, they work in that program and that program is for individuals who are experiencing homelessness, who have a serious mental illness and need assistance with navigating the systems to be able to gain housing. And so, with that, um, you know, I won't stand here and reiterate all of the things that individual has, individuals have said about adequate housing um, around, um, you know, credit checks, criminal histories. All of that stuff is right in line. The thing that I really wanna discuss tonight is how, um, housing is at the front and at the back, and I'll explain what that means, but I want you guys to, to remember that verbiage because in my role and where I sit, I see a lot of individuals who are either experiencing homelessness or they are experiencing a mental health or substance use challenge where they may need to go away in order to, um, get the help that they need so that they can, um, live successful lives of recovery. And in that, there's a lot of loss and housing is one of them. Um, the housing need is on the front and on the back. When an individual is leaving and going to substance use treatment, when an individual is going to mental health treatment, there's still all of these things. And so, and thinking of what legislation to, um, really hit or think about what I myself wanted to stand here and advocate for, it was difficult. And I'll tell you why it's difficult, because my experience has been when some legislation has changed, something else drops off. And so, in looking at, so at Region Ten and in mental health substance use treatment, you're taught to look at the entire person. Not just a little, you know, glimpse of the individual, but the entire person. And so the thing that I would advocate for is some type of unrestricted funding that we can individualize for individuals. So let me explain what I mean by that. So a lot of our funding is pretty good, um, of course, we know it runs out quick, you know, we've heard some of the barriers with it. But there's some things, so the funding that comes down, it always comes down with uh, parameters of who can use the funding and and a lot of those parameters don't always work for the individual, the everyday individuals that we're seeing. Um, it's not enough, we already know that, but there are other things that come up that individuals need assistance with. Um, and so, from the wraparound services, portion of it, yes, of course, we have the DMV. Um, there are sometimes immediate food needs, childcare needs. Um, because although, you know, the state gives funding for childcare while an individual is using, utilizing behavioral health services, we're dealing with um, those childcare facilities and not always having room. And then also, what about childcare services for individuals outside of behavioral health? If you want them to have employment, you know, a- assistance for, for mothers and fathers, parents who have children under a school age, um, who aren't able to do that. Honestly, housing is a great point and we know that it is something that needs to happen, but we also need to look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs and individuals' recovery capitals or ex- exactly where an individual is, what physical things do they have on for themselves, mental, social, employment. What physical things do they have on for themselves, mental, social, employment? All the things that an individual has for themselves and look at where housing lines up in that because. It, it's great to give everybody a, a, a home, but there's so many other things that they need assistance with to sustain that housing. And so that's what made it difficult and, and just coming with, with one ask because. Um, it needs to be unrestricted, if we, if we discuss, um, individualized treatments. And individualized things for the person, it's hard to kind of put everybody in a box, one size fiddle kind of thing. So, that was just like a little spiel.
So a big pot of money.
Big unrestricted pot.
Turns out that solves poverty, is that what we're saying? If we had all the housing and all the money, we would be good.
No.
I know, I'm not joking, like, I would give everyone universal.
I know, I know, I know, and I wish we could, but I could tell you what it would do, it would help organizations like, um. You know, that are running out of funding for individuals who have high needs to function as, um. Members of society the way that they would choose to function, to, to, um, do a lot, I mean, and also. Myself. This work is, it, it is, it is hard and it is daunting to see individuals trying so hard every day. And the resources not being put behind them, um, for them to be able to thrive or success, the marks behind them. If we have, want individuals to come out, of course, I attended the reentry summary, so, a summit, excuse me, um, it's seven thirty, April. Uh, long day, so if, if we, if we want individuals to, um. To come out, live the lives of recovery, to be able to thrive in the communities, and that's truly the goal, we have to put the resources behind it. To make sure that it happens, um, and so along with housing, I will reiterate this piece. Um, you do have individuals coming out with extensive criminal histories, um, you do have individuals who are. Um, lower income or even medium income who can't afford to live in the city of Charlottesville, and guess what? They still deserve to have adequate housing, running water, heat, air conditioning, no rodent free. All of those kinds of things, and so also one of the things that we see that I didn't hear mentioned, but I did come in late, is help with pest control. Some individuals, oh, they'll, they'll say, well, I have this issue, you know, whether it's bed bugs or whether it's something. And you're always kind of referred to APS for that, but sometimes it's not really an adult protective service. I mean, I understand why it's there, but you know, sometimes an individual has, you know, allows somebody to couch serve or some, you know, that's a term. And, you know, individuals have, or, or they moved into a place where there are rodents and that stuff is expensive. And fundings are restricted, so they're not unrestricted, so you are, aren't allowed to use funding or a lot of types of funding for those kinds of things. Um, so it's a couple of different issues, it's inadequate housing, um, affordable, accessible, I don't use that term lightly, Mr. Diller. And, um, just making sure we have the services in place and are putting the funding towards the services that individuals need. Mental health, SA, et cetera.
So a person could use, I guess, tenant rights to try to find a way to get that stuff taken care of?
I mean, I'm sure they could, but they're probably getting eaten up in the process, however long that takes for that process to. What, you know, rather than saying, hey, I'm experiencing this issue, this funding is here, you know. And then also for them, what does that create? So let's walk through it, um, it, you know, so. We have an individual that's going through the tenant rights process, it's taken a while for this to happen, they're getting ate up, their child's getting ate up, uh-oh, when they go to school, what happens? The teacher sees them and says, we gotta make a CPS report because this child is not, it, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Then this parent has to miss work, you know, and what happens if they don't have a job that is allowing them to, to miss that time from work in order to get this stuff taken care of? What happens then?
It's mostly hourly paid.
Right.
You miss, you, you miss some money.
You missing, and so then your lights and water are cut off, then when so, by the time social services gets. The situation that your, your child is living in, uh-oh, it's time for you to remove your child, so then now you're faced with whatever mental anguish from that. Do you have any other underlying mental, you know, so many things that can happen and it becomes a domino effect. Um, and that's why, yes, housing is a staple, but Maslow's hierarchy of needs and people being able to stabilize and. Have an array of different things, looking at the person as a whole person and not just one little facet, it's just.
I think the thing that you said, that, that, that we had not heard, but it's so important, is sustainability. Not just getting in, but being able to stay.
Right.
And sustain that, um, you know, to have the money to get in a spot is nice, but also having the ability. To stay in that spot, you know, and not struggle to try to stay, but to stay in there. And then have the ability to have my needs met, meaning I can stay in there and I don't have to stress about paying my rent. I don't have to stress about my kids, I don't have to stress about, you know, but all the other stuff that I don't have to worry about. So much of that is, is, has not been really talked about, but yes.
And I mean, we teach people, I mean, as little, as little children, we teach our kids and some of us, you know, put your best foot forward. You work hard and, you know, it'll all come for you, it'll pay off for you. And you have some people in this city working hard, I mean, every day, twelve hour days that are. You know, struggling, living in these conditions, not, you know, inadequate pay. Pay margins not matching how, the cost of living, you know, some organizations. Like Region Ten are doing colas, but, you know, I, I can't speak for any other organization if, or, you know, is McDonald's doing a cold?
Yeah.
You know, and so, um, it is a lot, I'm here for the long haul, I've been with Region Ten for eight years. But, um, you know, I'm here for the long haul to do whatever I can to, um. To, to assist and also just to, to br- provide any type of support. I'll tell you just something quickly, one of the other things, programs is peer support, that I have recovery support in my shop. And, um, they do amazing work, walking alongside individuals with lived experience. They have lived experience themselves, um. Assisting, providing the support, advocating and teaching that advocacy, so teaching a man to fish. Not necessarily fishing for an individual, the other thing that I would have liked to seen, and maybe this is the second step or third step. Is, um, some individuals who are actually struggling with this stuff, being able to speak to what their needs are. So I mean, it's great for us as all service providers and experts, subject matter experts and what we've seen, et cetera. But the people who are really struggling or some folks who, you know, can be identified to say, hey. What are you struggling, what do you think? Because in all actuality, they're living, the, the individuals with the lived experience are the experts in this.
We talked, I think we've, we've talked about that, about trying to find a way to, to do that. Any other questions? Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, will you bring Ms. Washington in?
I know you were the first one.
Uh, yes, ask some questions for Ms. Washington.
Me too, um. Just going back to the questions I asked to Roy, okay, so I wanted to ask the same question I addressed to Roy, which is, are there any barriers? Uh, but unnecessary impositions being put on your work, um, in your service provision? Um, at either the local level or the state level, that you, stuff you wanna knock down to help you do your work best? I need more staffing, first of all, but, uh, I do have an assistant, she's great, she just started in February, so. Trying to figure out, um, the flow of things has been interesting, but, um, you know, at this point, I think. City management has been really supportive, um, you know, I've got Ashley Reynolds Marshall's ears and, um. Sam's ear as well, so they've been really supportive and just offering, you know, whatever they can to help BRAC be successful. Um, not, not literally to speak too much about it, but there are talks about a new low barrier shelter potentially, so. Um, I'm excited to see if that conversation gets off the ground and actually comes to, you know, something real. Uh, but yeah, there's, there's definitely support there, I think it's, it's a funding issue, it's, um. You know, the will of the community, so a lot of people are kind of NIMBY, NIMBY people, they don't want a shelter in their backyard, but they want it somewhere. Um, and so I think there's a lot of public education and advocacy that needs to happen. Um, you know, these are your neighbors, these could be your, your family members, your colleagues. Um, a lot of people are embarrassed about being unhoused and, you know, not having enough money to afford a place to live or having been evicted. Uh, and it can happen so quickly, it happened to me, I had a payer quit notice as well. And, uh, I read the language and I was like, oh my gosh, I have to get out in five days, so I just left and then I became homeless. And if I had known, you know, what my rights were as a tenant at that time, I probably could still have been housed and I might not even be on this professional path. But, you know, everything led me here for a reason and, um, I think it's just important to ed- educate folks about homelessness and. Why we're seeing folks on the downtown mall, this is where a lot of the resources are, it's very close to a bus line, it's, you know, the Haven is here. Um, a lot of the faith-based organizations that Pacham works with are downtown, are centrally located in the city. Um, it's close to UVA and a lot of our folks need to go there for medical appointments or mental health care at Region Ten, so, um. Education, I think is the biggest thing. Kind of reducing that stigma almost next to why folks fall into it because there's no one reason.
Alright, so this is a question not just for you, but for everyone that's, um, that has spoken to me. And you said something, uh, very, and I think everybody's kind of said a little bit about education. But how do we, how do we get education to unhoused? A homeless individuals, you know, I know we, you know, sometimes individuals go through the Haven and different places like that. But for those that may not, you know, how do we get information to them? So they ha- and to support they need to, um, be able to deal with. Their homelessness or what they could do, um, and cause I, I think a lot of times when they are homeless. You know, they feel the despair, uh, I have no control. But I think if they had more advocacy or information, then they really find out how much control or how many opportunities are out there for them. So how do we get information to people like that?
I think Deidra touched on it with, about the PATH workers, they are employed by Region Ten, they're part-time, so I would love more funding to make them full-time. Uh, for starters, but they only work with folks who have a serious mental illness and one of the barriers for that is folks have to. Self-identify, yes, I have a mental illness, yes, I'm willing to go to Region Ten for supportive services. Sometimes there's a waitlist and it's difficult to access, so.
Everybody has a mental illness that is.
Exactly, so that's why I'm advocating for.
Why's there had to be that, you know, I mean, not to say that. You know. Cause I wanna make sure, um. Conscient of not going against the individual have mental illness or mental issues. Does everything, but also there are those that don't. That can still use that advocacy, that can still use that help, um, just as much.
Well, that's the outreach position you talked about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the city hasn't funded, but that's something.
There is money in the budget or there was money for this, this full year, so I don't know if it's.
City is funded, but no one's in the position.
Correct, they didn't know what to do with it, so they left it as a line item and it hasn't been touched. So I'm trying to prod them for that.
So I mean, you talked about prevention services, right, and then Elizabeth talked to us about. Just funding, basically money to, to keep people, what more, um, in terms of homelessness prevention services? Would you like to? I mean, I assume money makes a.
It makes a huge.
Goes a long way toward, yeah.
It does, and, and currently the Haven has a homelessness prevention program that's unfunded and state-funded. Um, and, you know, that can prevent people from falling into homelessness, but as Elizabeth mentioned, they have to kind of be at that point of. Almost being evicted, um, before they can get the assistance. Uh, they've put a monthly cap on their assistance so that once they hit that, that amount, they can't help anybody else for the rest of the month. So there's definitely a need out there, I think more prevention funding in general would help. It would also help if we could increase the cap, currently they can only help people who are at thirty percent AMI, so as I mentioned, that's about. What, twenty-four thousand for, um, a household of one, so if we could increase the amount of. Area needed income that would be eligible for homelessness prevention services, that would be huge as well.
So, yeah. To answer my, my portion of the question, yeah, so that's exactly why I said unrestricted funding because. When you have some of the funding and some of the funding that Shayla has talked about, it comes down a certain way for a certain population. And that's all we're allowed to use it for, if not, we lose funding and, and, you know. And so then the other thing to answer your question is, I think if things can be. Like for instance, if there is a, either a, a meeting that's held for individuals who are experiencing homelessness, we have a great network. Of service providers, uh, BRAC has, does a lot of work around that. Um, so that we can get everybody together, even if we have a meal. You know, you were gonna have to have some things to draw folks, but we have everybody together so that we can regularly give them that information. And then also like Shayla said, with the PATH workers, although that caseload is filled with individuals who are. Who have an SMI and are experiencing homelessness, when they outreach, they outreach to everyone, so getting information out, but, um. You know, we're gonna have to kind of get them in a place to where the outreach and pamphlet stuff is good, but get them in a place to where questions can be answered. Um, you know, what, well, you know, if they have a question about this specific thing, because even when somebody's outreach, you know, giving them a pamphlet or whatever. They're not, especially if it's long and lengthy, they're not gonna sit, you know, with each person, cause you gotta keep moving, cause, you know. Large areas like by the river, you gotta keep moving from person to person, but sitting down to explain all of the information that we wanna get out. Um, and sometimes people come to the soup kitchen, so does somebody come to the soup kitchen and, you know, start to see individuals and meet about this thing? So that was just to answer your question, gonna be acid talk.
Did you work through housing navigation? I'm curious if you're seeing a shift at, or maybe it's static in the kinds of landlords that you've worked with. Um, more restricted ones, if you would be able to speak to that.
Sure, yeah, so I think one thing that's lacking in our community is housing navigation, I think the Housing Alliance now has, um. Like a housing hub that offers housing navigation, but all the same agencies and nonprofits that work in housing are sharing the same list of landlords. And I could easily name drop a lot of them, but there, there's, it's not that many, um, there's shared rooming houses that are kind of the most common. That we send folks who are, who have an extensive history of homelessness to, um, but they're kind of slum lords, you know, they have not ideal. Conditions for, uh, their apartments and their six fifty, seven hundred a month, and you're sharing a bathroom and a kitchen with other people that you don't know. Um, and so it's just not ideal for everyone, but yeah, it's, housing navigation is, is tough and, uh, we just have a really stagnant list of landlords. Property owners, um, I just reached out actually yesterday to BRAC, B-R-A-C, the Blue Ridge Department Council. Um, and it said it was going out to about younger sort of property managers, I guess, in this area, so I don't know who it's hitting, but I'm trying to do some landlord engagement myself. Um, and apply for private funding so I can invite them in and talk about all the different housing programs we have for our clients, so. Not sure how it's gonna go, but trying to make some steps towards that.
I have a final question for really anyone, um. Well, not final question, could be like my final question, my personal final question is around, um, gender. Which I haven't heard folks talk much about, and I'm just curious if there are any issues specific to, um, to women, to. Gender minorities, um, how you see violence playing into. To the issues that you see and if you have any thoughts or recommendations.
That's a good question, um, I mean, traditionally men are making up a lot, or people who identify as men are making up more of the unhoused population. It is a small minority of women or, uh, folks who identify as female and, um. Typically, we do have house or shelter options for them, so there's that availability every week at the Salvation Army. When Pacham's open, they're able to accommodate all the, the folks who want to stay on the women's side. Um, and transgender, if you're transgender or non-binary, you can choose whichever, um, side you'd like to stay on. When you're, when Pacham's in session, um, Salvation Army, I think they're all. Um, Salvation Army, I think they're also able to choose whatever side they feel most comfortable sleeping on. So I haven't really heard any complaints in that regard. Um, I do see a lot more people with service animals or. Pets who are emotional support animals and aren't like officially registered. Um, and so folks tend to sleep either outside or in their vehicle because they have that animal that they can't bring into a shelter. So I'm seeing more trends with that. I'm seeing more trends with families with children sleeping in their cars as well.
I realize I don't know this, um. Is, is the Salvation Army, is anybody moving forward with a, with another shelter? I know that was a conversation that was being had.
Yes, we're in talks with that right now with city management, so.
Okay.
The conversation's happening.
But, but that we're only in conversations, is that right? Like, okay.
But it sounds promising.
But it's still, it would be at least a couple hours away from later, right? Okay, yeah.
That's your question.
Was wondering about um, funding streams. Does HUD limit what prevention? Um, can be used for, does that, does that wor- is that where the thirty AM, thirty percent AMI limit comes from?
That's what I thought, but then I was informed by someone that it might just be a local decision to do thirty percent AMI. So I need to read the HUD regs.
So that could be potentially impacted. And then kind of along those same lines, when you talk about unrestricted funds, are there names of specific state funding streams that are coming down that? Do you have restrictions that could be changed? Like if we could name that fund. And say, hey, let's change the parameters for that fund to broaden it. Is there anything that you could name that we could put on a list of?
Yeah, so I would say one of the funds is um, SA block grant funds. And so they are um, sp- specifics for, for substance use. They're substance use funds that can pay for treatment, you know, and, and pay for certain things, but. A, a lot of the parameters too, so let me tell you this. They don't just come around what you can and cannot. Um, fun, it's also around limits, but lim- the limits are outdated and not realistic for today's time or depending on where you live at. So we may be with a limit that is like um, here, for instance. If people are asking for double security deposit and last month's rent, or either security deposit and last month's rent. For us to be able to help someone, the parameter is um. Security deposit and first month's rent. So then someone may not have the, the rest of the funding or funding for furniture, you know, it's like limits, which I understand why. I understand why it is limits and the limits also don't match. The localities and, and where we are. So is that a local thing or is that a state thing? So it's a couple different. Um, avenues, it's kind of the chicken egg conversation as well, right? Where we are. Um, but the other, so, so SA block grant funds, which are, which are great, but it would be good if they could be. Um, unrestricted, just so that we could um, do more things with them to support individuals. Cause it's a, it is a list of, of things that you can and cannot purchase for individuals. Um, around needs. And also the thing that I will say is. Um, the more center is really reasonable in terms of costs when it, you know. But there are some treatment facilities where an individual needs a highly co-occurring enhance, meaning that they have a severe. SMI and SA need, and so us utilizing that funding, it is really expensive, like twenty thousand dollars for a month. And we only get, you know, around forty three thousand dollars. For the fiscal year, right? So that has to for, for a certain fund, so then that, we have to kind of. Distribute that out and figure out how some individuals have Medicaid, so that works. It worked great with Medicaid. Expansion came, but then, as you guys probably know, uh, around a year ago. Um, they started to send out the, the notices and some of the COVID things around Medicaid had stopped. So some of our unhoused individuals who are maybe getting mail at the Haven, or maybe, you know, not getting to their mail quick enough. Are not being able to get to like DSS to get their medic, make sure their Medicaid is turned on. So by the time they come to region ten. Or get something, we have to, we're gonna make sure that they're served, but we have to utilize that funding rather than utilizing their insurance and waiting for it to turn on. So it's just. You know, a web of things around that.
Any other questions? Um, comments?
Wow, and thank you. Um, I also hope that if, if, I mean, either any of you are open to it, um, would love for this. I'm here. Um, you can look on the screen, I, on the screen. Just, thank you, wow, and I'm, I'm looking forward, if you're open to it, this being like the start of a conversation, I would love to continue hearing from you. Um, some of the things we've talked about, um, to sharing additional resources as they become known to you, um, would love to keep doing the conversation. And learning from your expertise. And thank you for all the work that you've been doing in our community.
Yeah, and anything that you're doing community-wise, um, that you're having out. Um, let us know that, you know, that we can attend. Um, can have our faces there to get information, to meet the, the people that are going through. Those things, I think, um, if not through services or I think that's um, important for us to know as well. And for us to help. I mean, like I said, the more information we have, uh, when we go. And talk to Christina Colson or um, Amy Long or any, you know, that is a person. Uh, Curry D's, anybody like that, um, that has anything going on around the city, around this district. The more information we have, the better. Um, when they come to us and we get to talk to them. Um, as well as city council. Um, we'll be here with some of the things that they're trying to do. Money-wise, because I definitely will love to understand if there's a position that could help. Um, you know, what is going on with that money? Is it being used, not used? Um, if there's someone that's supposed to be in that position, are you trying to hire someone or not? Um, because it seemed like it's something that could be worthwhile to have a personal influence.
I just wanted to add, um, I'm presenting to city council on Monday, the seventeenth for a state of homelessness address. Four P M, so if you're interested.
You, you were just there, actually.
Oh, I was. Uh, I, right, I, I didn't know if people did just if.
You can go, but you can't ask questions or comment.
Oh, you can go, but you can't, okay.
It's four P M on the seventeenth. Yeah. I also hope that city council watches this meeting, right? Because it is just rich with. Information about what's happening in your community.
Well, we, we.
Sending them information.
We, we presented on Monday. And uh, I definitely let them know about the meeting tonight. That they should be listening or try to have themselves in the place. Um, I would think there may be one or two, probably at the graduation, but that's not everybody. They, they can have more than one or two. Or it's a meeting, so um, it's not like somebody could not have. Uh, roll up in here or could be watching online, Facebook, some of that. So, oh, they, maybe, so. Um, any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to mention, you guys asked about events. Um, so take my region ten, ten hat off for a second. So as a wartime fitness warriors board member. Um, they're having a, the first like USA certified boxing event on Saturday, this Saturday at one o'clock at Charlottesville High School. And what the proceeds do is they go to at-risk youth to give them an outlet, you know, they're able to, to come to the gym and, and. Compete if they wish to, you know, stay and compete like over years or either just work out and. Work on homework, people's skills, all of that stuff, so. So I said one P M.
George is a good dude. He's, uh, I mean, he's, yeah, I, I know. Sees the stuff on Facebook and his lives and stuff, he's the same. So, um, I'm happy for him. And wartime fitness and just opportunity, so I mean, there's some stuff going on here in Charlottesville, but. You know, may not get as much publicity as other things, but um. There are always little things that happen here that um, that make you. Uh, love being this, being in this community.
Yes.
Um, as well as the heartbreak.
Yes.
Of homelessness side of it as well.
That's right.
So, um, I want to thank each and every one of you uh, for being here on tonight. Uh, Ms. Washington, um, Ms. Stark, um. Deidre. I want to thank you guys, uh, so much for taking your time out, uh, sacrificing your evening and being with your family. Um, to give us um. Information, um, give us your knowledge. Um, and uh, I feel like you also uh, gave us a part of yourselves as far as. How important you, the work you do is to you. Um, so I just, again, want to thank you all. Everybody good?
Yep.
Yeah? Tell us anything else we need to do.
If you wanted to review your, where you're headed next in your work plan, you could.
Oh, alright, yes, let's. We got about five minutes. So.
They, you all should feel free to.
So we, um, as you know, we uh, have a work plan. Uh, we are right now. It's the second to last. So we are at June, we just had our work session. Um, and we have a regular meeting coming up on the twentieth. Uh, to talk about, um. Uh, Todd is working on the ordinance amendments, is that correct?
Yeah.
And he will have, hopefully have those things to us on um. On um, next Thursday, uh, or, or the twentieth, let's talk about. Jenny's gonna be pre- presenting us with her research presentation. Uh, will she do that in person?
Uh, yes, she'll be here.
Okay. So we'd like to have her there. Um. We do not have a session on July the fourth, but we will reconvene on the eighteenth. And um, the focus area is legislative priority, so are we reaching out to Christina Colson and all that? Okay, so hopefully they can come. Um, and uh, I think that's. It for now. Um, we, we presented on Monday to the city council. Um, I'm gonna just tell y'all what. This guy right here.
Why are you looking around, Todd?
Um, you know, we, we gave our information and, you know, we had a couple of, of questions asked and. Uh, Todd, um, did an awesome job. Breaking down what we do, how we do, and the restrictions that we have as far as around the questions that were asked. Um, and uh, so I was just, I stood there across from him. And the, on the other side, in awe of just how, how, how great he. Uh, wrote those things down and uh, the knowledge that he has. So uh, I'm greatly appreciative. Uh, of Todd and your knowledge and that you're um, definitely um, helping run our office.
I'm glad you were there. That was, that was great to present with you. I think that was, I'd love to re- rep- keep replicating that. Model is that co-presentation, because I thought you did a great job representing.
I mean, I felt like I was lacking.
I don't think so.
Todd was right on it.
No.
So, but I, but I appreciate that, yeah, that, um, your presenting and doing it well. Um, and then any word on the conference?
V A H R?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, we actually attended a Virginia Beach commission meeting, just to kind of check and see what they were up to. Um, and sort of put the bug out there, but I think maybe folks aren't ready to revisit that just yet. So we'll, we'll keep trying though. I think it's a good idea.
Alright, so Ju- July, we have no meeting for, but July, come back on the eighteenth, um. Todd and Lily will be getting us information about who's coming. And during that time, I guess we need to be working on, um, any ideas we have. Um, I was, I would say go back and look at um, the things that were vetoed by Yonkin. Um.
Yep.
And then, um. And I don't know, city council will have anything out by that time, as long as there are priorities.
Anyone want my notes that I took? I took a bunch of notes, I typed them.
Today?
Please, yes, please send them.
Yeah, I have a bunch of written notes.
Listen about, get them out to um, all the, all the commissioners.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
You don't have to read it, but it's coming towards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um. Where are we with the uh, ask, the ask of city police?
Um, good question. Um, we need to uh, talk about what questions are we gonna ask? Uh, that is a very extensive list of questions.
Just wonder how many people could have been saved from eviction rather than ever sprayed. If city had put its money.
With those resources.
With those resources.
I, I hear you. Um, and that's, that's a conversation we, we would need to continue. Uh, to uh, express out, because I know you brought, you. Uh, helped put everything together, summarize. But we do need to figure out what questions are we going to um, ask the city. So.
I, I would think even just a start of Mary's question of like all documents. I mean, that would be a starting place. All documents, all communications. All emails, all, right?
We can, we can do that, correct? Is that, that we have a charge to?
We, we are immensely powerful. In that particular arena only.
So let me get with Todd and Lily to figure out how we can structure that.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to impose my, but I would say like if, if we just wanted to do something quick, that seems like a very straightforward.
Well, if they're, if they're not even given PCR B. Uh, information.
This is.
They haven't done that since October. You know, I, I'd be really leery of.
Well, I, I'm not leery, I will be angry about it and happy to follow up on it. But till we make the request, we can't see what'll happen.
Correct. Yeah, so I'll talk, talk with Lily and I'll talk to Todd and Lily, so how do we can start that to get that out? Um. To act, to make the ask. So I don't know if we've ever done that before.
You know, we, we'll do that for other like investigations, we have that capacity to ask for information from the departments, um, but I think, yeah. And I think the other thing too that we can also look into is. If there's already been a consolidation of information based on a FOIA request from a member of the public, we can, we can draw from that really quickly. Because it's already compiled, so some of those are faster. Um, um, yeah, so that's something we can ask. Let's take a look at your list and see what, what's on it and. Ask around, see what's available.
I found it out of school, home one.
Yeah.
I'll have time. Alright, any other questions? Alright, I'm three minutes longer than I wanted to be. Alright, um, it is eight thirty-nine. Uh, thank you, uh, anyone that's listening, appreciate uh, the commissioners that were able to attend tonight. And uh, we're done.
Thank you.